Seven o'clock, we're calling me in order for one to rise to say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's called?
Morekka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Hand.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the February 26, 2018 Regular Village Board Meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Now, a motion to accept is written.
I'll accept it.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Morekka, seconded by Trustee Bowden.
Morekka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yep.
Hand?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 2/10/18 in the amount of $45,002.6947. Accounts payable, general fund, $30,064.56. Water and sewer fund, $35,005.4725. Giving a total of all funds, $65,006.1181. Are there any questions on any of the bills?
The locksmith, $1,437.
I do believe that was at the police store down here with the keypad and bond pad.
It's an advertising solutions. I mean, I know who it is and what they're doing, but what were they for?
That's Christmas in the Village.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Okay.
Second. Motion by Trustee Hand, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Hand?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morekka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
And Bowden?
Yes.
Public comment and any questions on any non-agenda items? Nothing there. We'll move on to reports of committees. No police chief's report, engineers' report.
Yeah, the only really, well, it's not really an update on Route 50 and Corning Project. The comment polls have been sitting there awhile. They've not been good about getting their relocations done like they promised. I talked to someone who took over earlier this, late last week, and they're trying to get it scheduled for early April to get the polls relocated. So I don't have an official start date from the contract yet, it might be contingent upon that, but the contractor will probably start in April. I'm just gonna get more firm date.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Jim, did you have any update for the board?
Did I?
Yeah.
Was that okay? Trying to make it rather quick. Hello, everybody. How are you? Sorry to miss the last meeting. Just trying to enjoy the warm weather in Phoenix and it was snowing.
Don't make us jealous.
So, Jim Belato with Aquil, and I just want to give you an update of where we're at with the partnership and acquisition of the water wastewater utility. So, the ICC process is moving along, actually it'll start moving along relatively quickly now. So the schedule right now is March 22. Initial briefs are due by the ICC staff. They'll come to us and the other parties in the case, and if we like them, it's fine. If not, we could do reply briefs back, and they're due March 29. Sometimes there's just clerical stuff back and forth. We hope to, the plan is to have a trap proposed order, April 3, which is great, and then the ALG, the Administrative Law Judge, then will have a proposed order to us. She said about April 17 is the goal. So that's good, and we're gonna come to orders. Then there's briefs on exceptions and all this stuff back and forth if there's issues with yours, but that's usually worked out more ahead of time. So if everything goes well, we'll have an order mid-April. And then it's a matter of getting it placed onto the ICC agenda for approval. We're hoping that can be done by mid-May. Worst case, it has to be done by the end of May because, statutorily, it has to be done by June 7. So we're on track, it's going well. So usually then there's a 30-day appeal period that we'll wait for it to close, and so we can plan on closing this in mid-June, or worst case, maybe July 1. So I already had some conversations with Attorney Marr, so we're starting to get the closing documents put together, and we're starting that process of working with Stacy and Greg and getting a lot of the billing and the clerical stuff put together, so it'll be a smooth transition. So thank you guys in advance and moving forward, it's been great. Your staff's been fantastic and it's moving along. On the engineering side, I know we've been working with Robinson, and they're working with us on the routing of the water main, so we're hopefully in about two, three weeks we'll have a really good idea for pulling title policies and things. As far as the labor side of it, we, and we've already ordered the laptops for Jim and Garrett, and how we do all of our maintenance connections all through, it's all portable. We're gonna have somebody do a, they'll look, they'll do a survey of the water treatment plan and find out what's the best carrier for internet, so we could do our VPNs there, so they could have an office there, so we have a computer and everything, it's all automated, so we're excited about that. So if you see people running around the wastewater plant, trying to testing the signals and see who's out there, it's those that, but the company that they hired is gonna be doing that. Human resources will be reaching out to Garrett if not at the end of this month, very, very early April. I guess they're really close to, for the package, leave together for him, so it's moving along very well. I think it'll, it'll be successful, it'll look really well. Looks like May 10, we're scheduled to get in front of, then have a meeting in front of the Chamber of Commerce, and then I know we're working on getting something scheduled there with the village, so.
Good.
This is pretty quick, if there's any questions.
What did you mention last time? What's the target date to get the water main done? I mean, they're gonna actually get Aqua Water into town?
So, worst case, it'll be January 1st of 2020. We have internal goals to be a year ahead of schedule. So, a lot could happen, but that's with your help, we're trying to get it done as soon as possible, so we're excited about that. And that's, Robinson's helping us too, and early meetings, we're starting the process obviously even before we, you know, and so.
You're hoping for January of 2019?
It's a goal. It's a goal, so, yeah, that's, assuming we have cooperation out of property owners and we can get it done, and should be able to do it.
Does your line on the Egyptian Trail have water yet?
It does. Yeah, that's one we'll tie off.
I saw him digging it last summer or so.
It's been active, I think, since November?
Yeah.
I'm not right here. Well, I know we're seeing some definitely nice comments of water quality changeover from UP, so it used to be the hard well, so definitely appreciate that.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, no old business, move on to new business. Item A, Piaton Boy Scout Troop 315 requests permission to canvas the village selling annual pancake breakfast fundraiser tickets on April the 23rd and the 30th. Representatives here?
All right, hello, everyone. So, yeah, we're just requesting the pancake breakfast as a C M flyer. It'll be May 6 from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It'll be $6 per person, five and under are free. They have, or serve pancakes, fruit toppings, sausage, muffins, biscuits and gravy, which promises it's gonna be great, my dad's making it. He's great at, you know, pistons gravy. We also have, like wall supplies last, we also have coffee, juice and milk, which we'll be refilling and all. We ask for your permission to canvas from April the 23rd through the 30th, and we also would like permission to let the boys, like individually, go around from door to door and sell from now until the 23rd of our first, you know, canvassing day.
You're gonna be doing that, what hours approximately?
During your troop meeting.
Yeah, during our troop meeting.
The two dates.
The two dates.
Okay, what time though?
About 6 o'clock until just before 8.
Okay, good. And it's good that staying light a little bit later now too, that helps.
Yes, very much so, because it was very cold when we were doing spaghetti.
Very good, and this is at the Piaton American League, I see?
Yes.
Good. Any questions from the board? If not, a motion to approve the Piaton Boy Scout Troop 315's request to canvas the village selling their annual pancake breakfast fundraiser tickets on April the 23rd and 30th. And individually, sporadically.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Trustee March, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Morekka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Thank you guys, good luck.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your year.
Item B, recommendation of approval of a seven-unit apartment building on West Street with conditions. This is coming back from planning and zoning, planning and zoning met under 28, and addressed this issue, and they made some recommendations back to Mr. Borgo, and Mr. Borgo's here to talk to us about it.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for letting me come to you tonight. This is actually the third time I've been in front of this board with a new project. I don't know if all of you are here, I was here back in 2015, and I was here in 2016. We had a brief break in 2017 because I bought 22 or 30 units in your town that were beat. And so this past year, we have been remodeling and modernizing 33, or 30 units in your town. When this particular billing, hopefully if this billing is approved, we will have close to 56 units in your town. But we have a very good relationship with your police department. We have worked diligently to remove some of the unsavory elements that resided in some of the properties that we purchased, and unfortunately, we had to evict one person in my new building that, what? Good. So we, we got them out quickly. So now, the purpose of today's meeting is to go and look at what we have now. When we bought those 30 units over six buildings, one of those units had a pre-approved, pre-zoned lot to the north of it, that's the one on 471 Southwest Street. The first part of this request for variance is to clean up the mess that prior owners have made with these lots. You'll notice that I've given you three colored diagrams showing the lot. And the reason I've given you three is so that you can see the progression. Back when the lots were originally planted, you know, 70 years ago or whatever, there were three individual lots. Sometime in the 60s, I'm guessing late 60s, the owner built on one of the lots, the lot furthest to the south, and then when he put in the driveway, he encroached about 5 to 10 feet, 10 feet on the lot to the north. But it wasn't ever formally re-subdivided, and I don't believe it was formally, I don't think there was a formal variance or an easement or anything like that at all. He just left it that way. So what I'm coming here to do is I'm, first of all, I need to re-subdivide these three lots so that they are, so that all of the parking and all of the driveway fits on a lot for the existing building. Draw a property line, you'll see that where that property line is at, then the bill, then that creates then two lots to the north, and I want to consolidate both those lots to create one lot. So when we're all done tonight, I need approval to, for, to recognize the newly created lot for the existing apartment building and another lot to be built, hopefully with this seven-unit building. This will clean it all up, you know, from everyone's point of view, and it'll be cleaner and neater, and legally, it'll be all tied up in one nice little bow. Besides that, then the second part of this is that we want to talk about building a seven-unit apartment building on the north two lots. We originally proposed to the Planning and Zoning Committee that we would have seven units plus we would have four garages that would be tucked under the seventh unit, and those garages would be accessed by a driveway leading from Southwest Street, running to the east into the end of the building. The reason I proposed that was to get some of the cars out of the parking lot and behind closed doors. I thought that would be a desirable thing aesthetically for the community, to have less cars visible and tucked away in the garage. But after having the meeting, it become very clear by the planning commission that they were worried that having four garages backing out onto Southwest Street might not be the best for the community, that it might create some traffic issues. And after hearing their opinions on that, I then agreed to eliminate the garages, and we would just go with seven units, and the driveway, of course, would disappear, more green space would be there, more landscaping would be there. And so what you see in front of you is basically new floor plans that I agreed to, new exterior renderings that I agreed to, new, new site plan, and a revised landscaping plan. All of these things were items that the planning commission requested, and I wholeheartedly supported and provided. For some of you might not know, this building is exactly like my building at 523 Howard Street. With the exception, that's an eight-unit building, this is a seven-unit building. That unit is very similar to the one I built at 130 Orchard Court. These are large apartments. These are not small, these are 1,050 square feet. They have two bedrooms, one bath, they have a kitchen, dining room, and they also have the, a full-size closed washer and dryer in each unit, full-size laundry. And that is what makes both of these buildings and what would make this building very popular. Our buildings are probably, compared to the existing housing stock apartment-wise in this town, these units are probably about 150 to 200 square feet larger than most of the two bedrooms, and none of them have a washer and dryer in the unit. All of these units have oak cabinetry, stove, refrigerator, dishwasher, air conditioning. They all have a hardwood floor-type product in the kitchen, in the dining room, and in the bathroom, oak trim and doors, and rubber carpeting. They're a good quality. We've been drawing very good clientele. As I said, one slipped underneath my radar screen, but it's one of those things, you can do all the checking, you can contact personal references, you can contact employers, you can do credit checks, and all of a sudden, someone just slides under, and, but once we figured it out, we dealt with it. So, this particular building, we're hoping to break round, I'm already moving forward, I've been getting some preliminary estimates and that type of stuff. We're hoping to break round within the next month and a half or two months. We want to have this building completed by, well, I'd say probably the end of October would be my goal. Shouldn't be a problem, we've done this several times. I would also like to state for the record that I've dealt with everybody in your public works department, when we've had to do a sewer and water and streets and curbs and that stuff. Your public works department is excellent. They're wonderful to work with. Whenever we've had some issues, we've got together and resolved them in a very good and timely manner, so I just want to, you know, very good people working for you. I really can't think of anything else besides the.
You know, I haven't. We're still waiting on the final landscape plan, correct, from you?
Yeah, I gave you a preliminary.
Right.
And what, and the way it's always been, the previous two times, is that you've always, you've always approved the overall plan, the design, and that you, I could not have occupancy permit or I could not have a building permit until my landscaping plan was approved by staff. So what I would be seeking is approval tonight for, to move forward on the construction, and then I would give my landscaper the full, go ahead to put down a full-blown one. This one here is by my landscaper, but I'll have it put together in a more formal format for you. So, but that's not, we'll put as much landscaping on there as we want, that's not an issue.
Bill, on the new drawing, I don't see a handicap spot, where is it?
The handicap spot is to the far east.
It's all the way.
It's at the far east of the.
It's like you can see the.
I brought a full-size one, if anybody can see it.
Is the garbage enclosure then?
The garbage enclosure is, is right here. Over here. And that can be shifted this way, so it will not be an issue to get in and out. Listen, the hash.
So the garbage enclosure is on the other property?
I can have it here, or I can have it here. I'm gonna leave it here.
I'm just asking, is it on the other property or is it on the property?
Right now, I have it so that it's directly aligned with this property, so both buildings can use it. Instead of having two facilities, I have one large container. And if you choose, I can put two there, but from an aesthetics point of view, it makes a lot more sense to put a landscape and or enclosure around one, and then go to one spot.
And the handicap?
Handicap is right here.
That conforms with the ADA rules as far as closeness and convenience?
Yes, because this unit, this unit right here will be the handicap unit. I'm sorry, did you see where I was pointing? Okay.
What's the total number of parking places you've got on this project?
Make your code, it should be 14. You require two parking spaces per dwelling unit, that's what I have. I had more parking spaces in the previous version, but I had to remove them.
I guess my point being that 1,050 square foot apartment's bigger than some homes. And you could easily have three cars?
I haven't, of all my places, I've never had, that is an issue. Never had it.
Or if somebody has a get-together, or two people have a get-together, where does the overflow go?
Well, like I said, all I'm doing is meeting your codes. I'm designing it.
Where does the overflow go?
Well, in this case, I, they would have my other building to the south, they could park over there, and then they would have to park on the street temporarily.
Well, we did mention at the meeting there is no parking on West Street.
There isn't no parking on West Street?
There's none allowed?
Parking at the park though.
There's parking at the park, yeah.
Oh, okay, well then that would be across the street from there, yes. And they could park there.
I've got a letter here in front of me from Lori Reynolds with a lot of pertinent questions. Have those been?
That was addressed at planning and zoning, was it, Matt?
Yep. She wanted the board to see it as well.
But they've all been addressed.
One thing they say is a 30-foot asphalt driveway, don't we request concrete driveways on all of it?
We did, and that's been removed for grass now. That was part of the garages. So when the garages went bye-bye, the driveway went bye-bye.
Yep.
And then we added more green space, and that's what the landscaping is supposed to be addressing as well.
And that's what shows up in your landscaping.
But the actual driveway will be blacktop or concrete?
The actual driveway will be blacktop, that was the request.
But don't we require concrete?
No, the parking lot is asphalt.
Parking lot was asphalt.
It's always been asphalt.
We require drive, concrete on residential driveways.
But there is no driveway.
There is no driveway.
It's just the parking lot.
It's just the parking lot.
Because the driveway was for the garages that are gone now.
Right. And there was an original request for that to be asphalt, and that was addressed, and then it was also addressed then to remove the garages.
Right.
So once the garages went, there was no need for asphalt, anything, and that's all gonna be green space on.
If you only built a five unit, would you still need the variance?
No, but it's pretty hard to make the numbers work. That's why I was hoping to get the seven units with the garages, because I'd be able to get probably a hundred and some dollars a month for garages. So to lose them puts, you know, I can still do it, but if I lose any more units, very difficult financially to make it work.
I was reading on here where to, based on the purchase price of today's lot prices and the impact fees, lot prices here have never been cheaper. I would say they're running $0.50.
Well, they're significantly, when that, you have to understand that I'm, I'm looking for variance for an existing zoning, and when this building, when these lots were originally zoned, I could have built an eight or more unit on there at that time, and I'm not asking for that. I don't think that's responsible. So if you figure what I had to pay for the lot, and then you start amortizing over so many units, and then you start figuring out what my, I mean, I think my impact fees for like the park district and the schools and all that stuff, I think it probably, I can't remember the last time, it was like $35,000, $40,000. So by the time you, so by the time you add $30,000 to $40,000 to a $70,000 lot, you've got $110,000 to amortize over, in this case, seven units, you're, you know, you're a little bit under $20,000 a unit, which is a considerable amount, a considerably large percentage of the costs of the unit. And you have to also understand, yes, the land is cheaper, but the rents I generate here are cheaper. I can't get what I get in Manhattan, and I can't get here what I get in Plainfield. And that's a big difference.
You pay a lot more for the lots there though.
But that's, that's my point, is that you can't have, if you're paying less for the lots, you're getting less for the rent. It doesn't work that, and my construction costs stay the same. What it cost me to build a building here and build that building in Plainfield, that construction cost is all the same. So relatively speaking, what you're saying, yes, it'd be a very good deal if I could get very low land and then get the rent that I get in Plainfield, but I don't. It's a ratio, it's a variation, and you gotta stay within those ratios, otherwise the deal don't work.
Do we waive the impact fees on the village, on this project?
That's the residential lots, yeah, this is commercial, so.
There are impact fees or some type of difference?
It's my understanding, correct?
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, I paid on all the, all the fees the last few times, I paid them all. And I don't object to them, I just let, just for the record, I believe in good schools, I believe in great park districts, and I believe in a strong village, all four.
When did you buy this property?
When?
Yeah.
One year ago, March 21st.
Okay. And you were aware of the zoning when you purchased it, correct?
That's, that's one of the reasons I bought it, is I know it was previously zoned, previously zoned. If it was just a raw land and I was seeking to rezone it, then the value of that land would have been significantly less, because trying to get land zoned multifamily in today's society is very difficult. I know that from personal experience.
Is this, are there any other existing lots in town, multifamily?
I'm not aware of it.
I think we're done.
I would, I would have found them, I think, by now.
I was gonna say, I think this is the last.
This is the last non-conforming lot. And just for the record, the last two lots I bought, they were non-conforming as well. They were previously zoned, as this one is, and they were non-conforming as well, to today's, today's standards and understand. And now, the other thing, just so the board remembers, is that I'm not required to put in fire sprinkler systems, but I do. So I'm not trying to be cheap, and I'm not trying to do any of those things, I want to build a high-quality product, I want to make sure that it's built well, and I want to be good neighbors, and I've had good neighbors, and I've had good relationships, so, and I continue to want that.
Yeah, in all honesty, being transparent, I mean, it just seems like a big building in that small lot. That's what we struggle with.
I totally understand it.
And I think the buildings you've built before are, are nice buildings, I think, you know, you're adding value to the town. So it's nothing against you, it's just that's a big building in a very small lot.
And I think Planning and Zoning did a, a good job of trying to address that by taking the garages out, creating more green space.
Right.
It just doesn't change the footprint of the building.
It didn't change the footprint, no, I understand that, but it changed, it changed the visual, I guess, you know?
And that's the point, that's what you wanted, so that's what.
And we do have, you know, we do have Planning and Zoning's findings of fact in your packets. Now, we're not actually voting on this tonight, correct? We don't have an ordinance?
Right, so there's not an ordinance in the, in the packet, so you have two choices. One could be motion to drag staff to prepare an ordinance for approval of the variations with the conditions recommended by Planning and Zoning, or if you disagree with Planning and Zoning, a motion to disagree with Planning and Zoning's recommendation and to deny the request of variations, in which case we wouldn't have prepared an ordinance.
Right. So are there any other questions or discussion?
Regarding the size of the building, the main sticking point is the southeast corner, correct? Other than that, it conforms to the.
Yeah, I asked for a variance for that or southeast corner, because the lot is such a weird shape.
Right. And the neighbor be in the railroad, not in another house.
Right, and there's no negative impact to it.
Do you find being so close to the tracks slows rental interest any?
Haven't had any.
No.
All of the apartments along Schrader Avenue have always been backdoor neighbors to the railroad tracks all the way through.
Quite honestly, the biggest thing that draws people to my units is that they're, they're modern and they're clean and they're nice. Even the old stuff that was built in the seventies that I've been buying, new cabinets, new appliances, dishwashers, new carpeting. I mean, everybody walks in, they're like, "All right, this is nice." And now, here's another thing you probably don't know, but out of, like I said, fifty-something units, I'll bet maybe, maybe seven to eight are from Peatown. The rest are coming from the north. And they're coming here because my products are modern and clean, and we give them a good value. So that's a good thing for Peatown, that you're drawing people into your town that had not been here before. And that's a positive thing.
Troy, we talked about, you know, we're going to be redoing West Street eventually. That's kind of the next aftercorning, right? So does this plan kind of conform with what, you know, the... I mean, there's anything that should be done here that would make that project any easier or better?
I don't think at this point we really know that, just because we have zero details on what we'd even do on West Street. You know, if we wind it, or if... Whatever we do on West Street from that right-of-way, we'd probably fix, we'd probably have to put a new driveway in here anyway. You know, the apron from the right-of-way to the road.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we'd be doing a drainage. It depends what type of project it is, even getting the funding, so.
Okay.
Nothing that I can see right now that would affect that.
And for the record, Robert, we've worked with Robinson during this whole time, so they've... I've worked with him. And your turn.
There's a, did the sidewalk in front of your other building come up at all? So the, the existing building that's there?
Yes.
There's a sidewalk that goes west to the park, or it's like, it's...
Well, if there is, it's a very small...
Right, it's a little narrow sidewalk.
Okay, yeah, I know. The ones north and south, yeah, okay.
And it's, it's, the one that's going to West Street?
Okay, or across the street to cross the street?
To cross the street, right. That's not in the greatest of shape, and I was, I'm big on trying to get all our sidewalks connected. And so if, when this, when this project goes in, we'll have a sidewalk on that side of the street and the village. I'd like the village to connect, there's, there's no sidewalk going towards South Street. And so it'd be nice to have then a nice sidewalk that would go towards the park. You know what I'm saying? So if you could repair that, or make that a regular-sized sidewalk that goes like from the entrance of that building to the park, do you understand what I'm saying, to West Street?
I have no problem with that at all. If you want to put that in your requirements, I, I'll pay them. It's not an issue.
Is the setback on this project the same as the other building?
Yeah, we're not asking for any special setbacks, except for that one little corner.
Same distance from the sidewalk back?
I'm following your current codes, your setback from your, I'm...
When you look at it visually, are they going to be the same distance as this one?
I know, I don't know that, because like I said, I didn't try to change your codes. I tried to build this building to meet your current setbacks. So I didn't even, I didn't think that would be taken into consideration. I'm just meeting your current codes.
Those are all kind of, the house to the north is like right on where the sidewalks should be. So it's going to be, this is going to be farther back. It looks like he's east of the current building. The new building is east of the current building.
It'll sit back further.
Yeah, based on this.
I think the building's good. I personally don't care for outside entrances.
I know, we've had this discussion.
I know, you like it. You get more square footage of it, but...
People love it.
I don't care about that, what the tenants think.
I understand.
How is it, how is it, my question, how's it going to look ten years from now when they've got their...
How do you, let me ask you this. How do you make that guarantee for anything? I can buy a single-family home, how do you guarantee that the front of my house isn't going to be overgrown with thistles? And that the sidewalk is going to be maintained, and people don't put, they have a three-car garage, and there's four cars in a driveway, and two garbage cans, and there's a four-wheeler and a boat? How do, there's no guarantees on any of that stuff.
Well, if it's rental property, you write it into the lease, so they can't do all that.
Oh, but you can write, you could write anything in the lease you want, but the fact that matters, the only thing that's good is that anyone that's spending this type of money, and anyone that owns that building, but after I'm gone, they're going to be spending well over a million dollars to buy each of those buildings. And I don't know anybody stupid enough to spend a million dollars and then let them all run into the ground. Unless, unless they're extremely wealthy people and they're somewhat daft, I don't know anyone...
I'm not saying run into the ground, but it will become a, a storage area for all the paraphernalia.
Well, like I said, I've had a building that's done this, and I've had that building for now for twenty-five years. Never been an issue. So I've got over two decades, twice the amount of time you're talking about. It's never been an issue. But I run a strong ship. And I suspect that whoever takes my, buys a building from me, it's going to give me millions of dollars. I would suspect that they're going to be financially motivated to do the same thing. Because if they don't, they won't get the rents. If you don't get the rents, you can't pay the mortgage. And you can't make a profit.
Questions? I was going to say, any questions?
Do you know how many rental units are in town total? If you have fifty-six, is there, do you know the specific number?
I, I don't know how many there are.
Are you half the market, you think, or three-quarters?
Oh, I don't think I'm half. I wouldn't know. There's quite, there's, there's got to be at least on Schroder alone, there's got to be another, probably ten buildings, each in four units each at least. And then in Orchard Court, there's three eight-unit buildings. That's at least twenty-four. And then over on Howard, I know there's probably about another eight or ten, and they're all probably four units each. And then I know on Route Fifty, or Fifty and movement to Peatown Road, just in the north of there, on the east side of the road, there's those, I know, I think there's twelve units or so there. That's the ones I know of, but I don't have half the market.
Okay.
I don't, I, that's not what I'm, I'm not trying to...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take, but I will tell you that, I mean, I wouldn't be here in front of you if I, if I wasn't doing well. And, but the fact that matters, I'm doing well, and you are helping me, and I'm doing good for Peatown. I'm, there's, I know from talking to your police department, I know the troubled areas you've had. And I've been acquiring those troubled buildings and removing those issues. So, and I talked, right when I come to town, I talked to the mayor, and I said, "If everything goes good, I want to buy more here, because it's a great town. You have a wonderful school district, you've got great hometown feel, wonderful place to raise a family. You've got development now coming along on Fifty-Seven, you've got Amazon just to the south. I know there's, you guys are working on things on the, you know, west side of Fifty-Seven. This area's going to be coming into its own, and there's good people there. I want to be part of it."
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to, go ahead and draft an ordinance to approve this, subject to the conditions of the planning permission put forward. And I'd like to add my own, having that sidewalk in front of the existing building.
I think Mr. Borbo's agreed to that.
It's not a problem.
I know, Lori, you've addressed the planning and zoning. Have your questions been answered? I mean...
No.
Okay. But the, I guess, but the board is acting on the recommendation from Planning and Zoning, you know, tonight.
I understand, but I do have one question.
Okay.
How many loads of fill do you plan to bring onto that property?
I haven't calculated the loads. The building elevation is based on the recommendations between Robinson Engineering and my engineer. And Robinson Engineering is specifically responsible for making sure that my building does not negatively impact any of the waterways or any of the other issues around the neighbors. And as you know, at the last meeting, I've already agreed to hook your gutters up to my stormwater system to help prevent any problems. I've already agreed to that, and that is still, that offer is still there.
I'm asking, oh, how are you going to bring the level of a lot to the level of the street?
Well, you know that currently, right now, that lot is a, is being used basically as a unauthorized detention pond. It's, it's low. So I'm going to, whatever the elevation is there, that's been chosen by the engineers is what I'm going to put it in. I have not analyzed...
And one of the conditions from Planning and Zoning is, you know, final engineering approval.
Does anyone know?
Well, I think once, they're going to have to calculate that, I mean, as we go forward.
He's calculated the distance for the flows of the water already.
But as far as the exact number of...
We haven't done any calculations. Mr. Borbo's engineer did the calculations, and we're simply reviewing him to make sure that it's not causing any problems.
Right, you've agreed with them, yes, that's exactly right.
We're not setting the elevation of the villages.
Right, but I, but I think, in fact, you did request us, we had it at one elevation, you requested us to move it at a different elevation, and we did that.
To protect the building.
Yes. So that's, I'm not trying to put words in, all I'm trying to say is there's been a direct communication between my engineer and the village's engineer and to work out all these details. So what you're seeing here, the, the flow patterns of everything, everything has been analyzed between my engineer and your, your engineer. And, and to, and before we even got those engineering plans, I told them to put all of the gutters from this building all go underground, and they all go to a, I can't, I think it's like a six-inch or an eight-inch corrugated line. Now, one drop of that roof water is going to go on her property, nor will it go on anyone else's property. Go into these lines, it'll all be connected to that, there's a manhole there on my property, and then there's a stormwater line in front of the property, and they will all be directly connected into there. And there won't be any drop of water from, from that property. And we did this, we did that at Five Twenty-three Howard as well. We connected all those gutters up to a line and run it right to the storm sewer. And in fact, we helped solve, the neighbor to the north had a ponding in his land lot, and we connected that into mine and brought it up to the storm sewer as well, so, as I said.
Does anyone have any idea, it's supposed to be thirty-five percent? I understand the lot coverage no more than, does anyone know how much this building and parking lot are taking of this lot? Does anyone know that?
The square footage.
But it's, it's really, the question you're asking, it's not how many loads. It doesn't really set the issue. The issue is, what is the final elevation and the grading elevation? And we've already calculated that, and we've already shown that, and none of this water is going to your property.
Mr. Borbo, that question you just asked, now I'm asking another question.
Then I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
The question was, how much parking lot and building are you taking on the lot?
I haven't, I don't know. It's not a requirement to calculate, so I don't know.
Well, is it thirty-five percent? Is it an ordinance?
I'm asking for the variance, and that's what we're here for.
One of the variances was the overall lot coverage. It is, it does exceed the minimum lot coverage of thirty percent. However, that's because of the parking lot is the most part. If the building was to stand alone, it would be thirty-three percent or something like that. But you have the parking lot, which covers, obviously, you have to have. And that, that's what takes up more of the, of the lot coverage. So not being a regular, single-family home, that was one of the variances requested.
That's what you requested, yes.
And that was a variance that the Planning and Zoning has recommended? Anything else, Lori?
Well, I am asking everyone to please think about the lot itself. He can talk fancy, he can talk about finances, and money talks, and I know that. He can talk about engineering, but every one of you have driven by the law. You know what lot it is, you know the size, you know what it looks like. You know what this building looks like on Howard Street. If he has come into town and changed every lot to conform to what he needs to make money, I'm sorry, build a six-unit or a five-unit and be satisfied. I don't have the money, Mr. Borbo asked. I don't have lawyers, but I do know what I see, and that lot is too small. So I'm just asking you to consider, if you think just because he wants to, at his bottom line, just build the unit that the lot is made for, if it's five units, if it's six units.
What the board is doing, what the board is doing tonight now is addressing the recommendation from Planning and Zoning. There's a process to all of these things, and Planning and Zoning is the first step, you know, for that process. And Planning and Zoning has held their hearing, they have sent their findings of fact and their recommendation to the board. And you're, you know, you are...
I'm just asking, I have questions.
No, and I, I understand that, and I, you know, I just, like I said, I wanted to be not...
I know they all caved in, because... So I'm satisfied, but I'm just telling you.
So we do have a motion by trustee March to direct staff to draft ordinances for approval of the recommendations from Planning and Zoning, as there are second.
And the sidewalk.
And the sidewalk, with the addition of the request for the sidewalk from trustee March.
And landscaping, will we need, landscaping needs to be approved? I just simply need to know if landscaping needs to be approved before I apply for building permit, or if it can be before I get occupancy. It's entirely up to you.
So, yeah, we would need the landscaping, the final landscaping, yes, and the final engineering.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, we'll get this over. We only made a minor changes, so virtually nothing has been changed as far as workflow or any of that.
What you gave me is not a landscaping plan?
That's not a problem. I'll put together a formal one for you, just so that you understood. Just so that everyone understood that I understand I'm not going to get by by putting a pine tree here, a pine tree there to the tune. I understand.
I need a formal plan, so.
Yeah, let me, can you give me, do you have an example of a format?
Bill, you've done those before.
Okay, well, I just don't know if you had something else in mind.
Any other development that comes in, if you're doing a commercial development or whatever, to come up with a formal landscaping plan showing what, what trees are going to be where, and what type of grass you're going to use, and where you're putting grass.
Yeah, diameter of the tree, stone, or where you're, whatever you're doing, so. Not an issue.
It's got to be detailed.
Not a problem. Like I said, I understand this was not detailed. This was just to give you an idea.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Fountain.
March?
Yes.
Fountain?
Yes.
Pam?
Uh, yes.
Jones?
No.
Anne Marovka?
Yes.
So the motion passes four to yes, one no. And this will come back at the next meeting for formal adoptions of the ordinance and the findings of fact from Planning and Zoning.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Uh, let's see. I didn't see ordinances. Number one, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Village Code relating to vehicle seizure and impoundment within the Village of Peatown.
Do you want to keep that? You can keep that if you want. That's a full-size version.
Thank you.
If you need any more full-size versions, let me know.
So basically, what this is doing is bringing up the impoundment fee to five hundred dollars. This is a recommendation from Chief?
Yes. Three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred before. What do we impound a vehicle?
Uh, if somebody has stopped, probably for like a drug-type stop, seizure, suspended license.
Somebody leaves it out on the street during a snow period for two months and doesn't move it, it could be towed. I mean, it could be impounded at that point. And it's five hundred dollars plus fees for towing.
Yes.
How much was it?
Three. Yes.
Trustee Jones, there's a list of, in the ordinance, of 15 different offenses for which your vehicle...
Oh, okay.
Only 13?
Need a motion?
Yeah, this would be ordinance number 17-27. Motion to approve the act.
Motion, second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
And Morekka?
Yes.
Item two, an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 19 of the Code of Peatone, entitled Trees and Shrubs, removing a portion of 9807 pertaining to damaged trees and adding 99 regarding OSHA and the American National Standard for Tree Care Operations.
Real quick, after review with the attorney, we're changing 99 to...
I'm sorry, 98.16.
98.16.
98.16.
Reference is a whole different.
Okay.
This was requested by the Tree City USA people with the state. We had a couple items in our, one item in our current ordinance that needed to be struck, and two items that dealt with Arbor, the Arbor Society and OSHA rules that we had, and they're very long and entailed, so we're just using the numbers and incorporating them by number. And this, this will satisfy their request, we'll send that back. Hopefully, we'll get our designation, so.
So you're going to start planting trees, is that what this is?
Well, this is...
This is part of it, but I mean, this is...
We do plant trees, we have a tree, you know, we planted trees in the past. We're trying, we've applied for Tree City designation, and they came back and they were asking for some changes in our current ordinance to...
All our trees are like gone, like, like on the, by lowways and stuff?
And we planted, you know, some parkway trees this past several years. Any other discussion? This would be ordinance number 17-28, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Peatone Village Code relating to, nope, that's the wrong one, that's trees. An ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 19 of the Code of Peatone, entitled Trees and Shrubs. Ordinance number 17-28.
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Morekka, second by trustee March.
Morekka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
No.
And three, an ordinance adding Chapter 124, donation boxes to Title XI, Business Regulations of the Village of Peatone, of the Peatone Village Code regarding donation boxes.
Just as these start to get prolific in a lot of areas, they can become rather detrimental to the area because people will leave stuff outside of them, property owners don't take care of them, and they want to point back to the people that put them there to come and take care of them, so we wanted to get some, put some regulations out there that put some teeth into, A, who owns them, and B, who's responsible for them. After mayor, we put down a $25 fee, mayor, you had a question as to whether the fee was enough?
I think trustee Bowden.
Oh, trustee Bowden.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Well, I thought the fee was pretty low, I'd like to see that a little bit more, because...
Who can?
Secondly, I wanted to limit the scope of what could be collected, because I'm concerned about electronics for sure, furniture for sure, and even household goods, you know, I just wanted to limit it primarily to just clothing.
Especially if they're one of those boxes, they got by bureaucrats, a lot of that stuff gets left.
Yes, that's why we want to stop that.
Right.
Yeah, we, we just went by, I mean, basically, we wrote code that is pretty much in every other village, and we can certainly do whatever we feel like we need to do.
Just, I would agree with that, it's a good idea.
So what you're proposing is to eliminate the word electronics, furniture, household goods?
And I was concerned about food, how does food work?
You could have, you could have a fruit pantry type of thing.
Yeah, probably canned goods.
Where they don't, they're not open all the time, like St. Vincent's, so...
Yeah, they said, just lack of...
People drop off canned goods regularly, you know, or grocery bags full of food. They're there today, but they're not open yet. That's why we look at that. But that, again, it's our code.
So in terms of this amendment, would we put something specific in there then, that furniture, household goods, electronics, and other items that can't fit in the box are prohibited? Yeah, that'd be perfect.
And the, the fee?
Too large for max?
I'm, I'm agnostic on that one, but it just seems really low.
You thought that the fee was too much?
I know, it's too low, too low.
Oh, too low, okay. We could do it.
Yeah.
Go to 50? So who pays that fee?
Well, you know, some, a new phenomenon with these are, some, most of these are not charitable organizations that are putting these out there. So they enter into a contract with the, most of the time it's the tenant, unbeknownst to the landlord, that they can put these boxes out there and then they pay the tenant a monthly fee. So, and that's not always the case, but it's, it is the case. So that's why if we at least had a fee on there, we'd know who owned the boxes, and they would have to state on there who the landlord of the box is. Because if, for teeth and disorderance, if they don't come and rectify their box within 24 hours, we can go back to the landlord or whoever was leasing the space to them and make them clean it or ticket them. So, and, and that gets, that's, and I know Mike's going to tell me that's really gray when you come into landlord-tenant situations, but, you know, it's just a phenomenon that just...
Well, can we do it, like an annual fee? Because this is just like a one-time fee, right?
No, we have a space, is it annual?
It's renewed annually.
It's renewed annually.
The license renewed annually.
Number D, duration of the license, yeah.
Have we got any of this going on in town now? The boxes that I'm aware of are at Burkitts, and there were some out here at one time, but I think they're gone. That turned into a garbage dump? Yeah. And that's still what we're trying to...
They love Dollar Generals, and they love that kind of, you know, that kind of property.
Yeah, I think, I think the ordinance is a great idea.
Yeah, well, we just wanted to get ahead of it.
Yeah, one more word on enforcement, we also added in here that, you know, if it's not kept up to the standards of the ordinance, it's a public nuisance, and then the village has the power to abate. We could clean up the site and lean the property.
Ticket and bill.
Yeah, bill them, and if they don't pay, we could lean.
Just gives us a little bit more power to keep that stuff clean. Because there's a lot of things with books, there's records, there's, there's all kinds of things that they have these boxes for now. And then, I don't know if you've ever noticed, like at Culver's, they got nine of them lined up, they used up a lot of their parking lot for them. And that, they used, and they told us at the time, they used that money to have their holiday party for their employees from the rental of those, so, yeah. So you can get quite a few of them.
Because they used to just have...
Well, and then they have to, and the nice thing is, at least if we have an ordinance, we can go out there and count spaces. If they're taking up too many spaces, they still have, they still have required parking that they have to maintain too, so.
So we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Correct it, yeah. Sounds good.
So, thanks, stay in motion to table that ordinance until the next meeting.
I screwed it up, so I'll motion it. The other option, if you wanted, you could approve it and we could just make these changes and...
I'd rather have it written out, let everybody read it, come back with it.
Okay.
So motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Ham.
Abbott?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
All right.
Questions of the press? I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the employment performance and compensation of specific employees.
No motion.
Second, motion by trustee Morekka, second by trustee Jones. And there will be no action coming out of closed session.
Henson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
So...
Yes.
Just know it.